And this is. And this is a special meeting on redistricting today, June the 29th. If I could have a call to order, so I'm going to name a couple of trustees, so make sure that we have quorum. Trustee Maria.
Present.
Trustee Kane.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan. He will, he's out for a little bit, but he will return in a couple of minutes. Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Stoma.
Present.
Trustee Vote. Is that here? And trustee Wilson?
Here.
Okay, perfect. And myself, thank you. If I can have, so the next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. So today, we're going to have something a little bit different. So I invited a constituency constituent from Lone Star College. If I have Mr. Paul Gregory lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, very much. Our next item is the certification of posting of the notice. A doctor head has a certification notice been properly posted and certified?
Yes, I certify. It was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you, sir. We don't have closed session for tonight. So let's reconvene the meeting and Desiree, do we have any public comments?
Madam Chair, we have two public comments for tonight. I'd like to call Mr. Paul Gregory.
Thank you for the time to address my board members. I had a chance just yesterday to meet with some board members. I figured tonight I might be able to meet with a few more. But I'll keep my comments brief here. And I'm kind of addressing the board, but I'm also addressing the public. And I have always considered myself now the typical taxpayer. I really had no idea where my tax monies went or how they were allocated, made the decisions. And recently, I've gotten involved with several civic groups, patriot groups. And I think when the last tax appraisals come out, we saw that we'd have about a 35% increase in our property taxes, our appraised value of our homes. And I'm hoping that everyone's aware of that, and I'm not surprising anybody tonight, but I think the whole community is looking at that now. And when I started looking into it, and of course, my first anger kind of went out, what in the world is our county doing, our assessors doing? And we went down to the tax office and there was a demonstration out there with signs and everything else, but you know, they're just collecting the taxes. But different entities, boards like this, I found out actually have the ability to give us up to a 20% homestead exemption. And of course, I'm thinking a 35% increase in our appraised property values, really, it's, you know, that's going to generate a lot of money, counties, schools, fire departments, you know, all that. So when I learned that you had the right to make, you know, fluctuations in that amount, I was hoping that the board would have been considering the current economic situation that we find ourselves in right now. We've got 9.1% inflation rate for 2022, and that's probably just the beginning of it. I believe it's going to go much higher. Take my car down to fill it up with fuel and, you know, I'm looking at a hundred dollar bill there for the week, sending similar amount to my wife's vehicle. Our groceries are skyrocketing in costs, and I know there that we're only looking at the beginning of it, and it's going to get much worse soon. So I kind of thought that this board, even, you know, it was kind of late when we learned about it through our tax appraisals. But I really kind of thought maybe this board is looking at it right now, and they're trying to say, hey, maybe we can help with this. We've got some additional revenue coming in. Maybe we can help the community by raising that exemption amount. And that appears that that's not happening. So that was the reason that we came out. That's the reason I'm talking to you tonight. I know things are very late at this point. But I wanted you to know, we're going to continue. The issue is going to be there next year also. There's a lot of people in the community that are concerned about it, and I would just want to ask this board to be as, you know, good stewards of the money that we give. And if there is help that you can give us back and raise in that, I know some of the, some of the organizations give less, maybe zero, and some are given to the 20% mark. But I'd like to ask your help on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Desiree, do we have another person?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to call Ms. Cindy Phillips.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening, and I'm going to echo the sentiments of my friend, Mr. Gregory. And there are many of us, as he alluded to, that have come awake, what, you know, looking at our new tax assessment, as we all are, and looking at the new appraisal values, which that's another, the fact that we kind of disagree about what they're doing there is a whole discussion that won't belong here. But what we're trying to do is to look for some relief that we can get right now, because as, as Mr. Gregory alluded to, everything, as you know, is going up. Only thing that's not going up is our income. So that's the struggle, and many of us, myself included, we're looking at, you know, my husband's already gone through one career in the military, retired. So we do have that. But as you know, that's probably, you know, it's not that much, not enough to live on. So he's, you know, 17 years into his second career and about to turn 65. But we're looking now going, well, gee, we didn't quite make it there, and how now we're in the, in the predicament we're in. And we're looking at it going, are we going to be forced to move like so many? So many are being just taxed right out of their homes. That begs the question to me is who's going to come along behind us and scoop up these homes? At some point, it's going to collapse because people aren't going to be able to come in and afford that. And then the taxing is going to come from where? But that's a whole different topic. But so what I, we're just looking around at this, we've gone, we've done our due diligence. We've gone to MCAD. We've met at their board meetings. They actually even had us sit down with Mr. Metz, took us aside and said, you know, let's, let's, he printed up special forms for us that shows every entity that's taxing and what they're, you know, what they're allowed to give us on an exemption and what they're not giving. So we're just going, we went to the ESD, we went to the emergency service districts and had a conversation with them. And we're just, that's, that's all we're doing is going around and asking. And when we went to the SD, my takeaway from that is they said, they, given everything that they have, they don't see how they can do anything at this point. But at least on that, my take, when, as I left there, my understanding of that was the only income that I know of that they get is from our taxes. And the outgo that they give is emergency response. They're the first responders. They will keep my house from burning down, hopefully. And they also keep our, our homeowner's insurance from being too high because they're making sure they have a fire, a firehouse so many, you know, within five mile range. That's part of the trade off. When I, when I'm looking at Lone Star College, and I have three children that went through here, and I know we had a, we're in the district. So we did get, you know, a lower cost, but I still wrote some pretty nice checks. And so the difference I'm seeing is it's not just tax dollars that come here. Does that make sense? So I'm looking at it going, unlike the, the emergency service district, this is, I equate this to a little bit more along the lines of, a little more along the lines of business. So I'm just looking at, and I don't know, because I, I don't know what you see. So and I did speak with Chancellor Head. He was gracious to come up before the meeting and offer to have a meeting because I said, I would like to see how all, where does the money come from? Where, I think that these are questions that many of us are asking now. We're starting to look around and go, okay, we need to find out what's happening in every aspect, not just here. And so we're just trying to do a little bit of a deep dive to figure out where everything's, you know, and is everything being, as Mr. Gregory alluded to, is, is everything being, are there, is every entity being a good steward of our money? That's really where it comes down to. Because it's, as we're learning, everything happens at the county level, everything. Everything, it's not a DC down, it's a county level up. So when you see the issues that are going in our country, it happened county by county. So we're going to be looking at things in our county as, as, and being good citizens as we should be. So we're here to, to do that, and we're here to see if also if there's anything that, as citizens in, in the county, that can we do to partner with you and maybe help in that aspect. So we want to extend all of the branch as well. So just, we aren't going anywhere. So we're here and we know that you guys, you know, we just want to let you know that we're here to be good, good, help you be good source of money, if that makes any sense. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Anyone else, Desiree?
That concludes the public comment.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Now we move to, one second, to the approval of the March 24th redistricting committee meeting and the June 2nd redistricting committee meeting and the June 8th public hearing, a special meeting on redistricting. So can I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
It's been moved improperly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the item passes. Thank you so much. And just to make sure, let the record show that trustee Vote is present. Thank you, sir. All right, our next item is the special reporting considerations, which is the consideration of the proposed map. So we have Ms. Miss McBride with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair Saldivar. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Lisa McBride, and I'm joined tonight by my colleague Paige Martin and virtually online, Rocky Gardner, your demographer, who's seen you through this process. Well, trustees, we have come to the end of a very long journey that we've been taking together through this process called redistricting that we kind of started in earnest, probably last November, last October, but almost a year before that, the trustees had started receiving training as a full board and as a redistricting committee regarding the, the legal components and requirements for redistricting. So tonight, we are presenting the proposed map, which is the result of the long journey that we have taken together as a group of trustees and your administration, as well as your stakeholders in the community. And to sort of give a recap of that journey before we get to the proposed map. But in brief, because some of this, I know the trustees have heard and I know the public has heard, but for anyone who's joining us online or in, in the public in the auditorium for the first time, just want to make sure that we lay the proper context before we look at the final result of our hard work. So I'm going to call my colleague Paige Martin up just to lay a brief context for us.
Thank you, Lisa. Good afternoon, everyone. For one final time, I'm going to give a very brief legal overview. Redistricting is the process by which boundaries of elective districts or single member districts are periodically re-divided in response to changes in the population. How do we know of changes in the population? The U.S. Census Bureau gives us that data every 10 years after the census is conducted. And so I wanted to just briefly give a shout out to the redistricting committee because, as Lisa just mentioned, this process has been going on for months and months. And from the very beginning, you all as board members have said, through the redistricting process, we want to make sure that all trustees are engaged, and we want to fully engage the community and allow them to give comments and feedback that we will consider as we are considering the maps. And so a redistricting committee was formed, and it was chaired by trustee Mike Sullivan from Single Member District 8 as well, and, and on the committee with trustee Sullivan were trustee Ernestine Pierce from Single Member District 2 and trustee Art Maria from Single Member District 4. And these three did an amazing job of guiding the, the board through the redistricting process. They were at community forums, they attended special redistrict, redistricting committee meetings, they asked hard questions. They considered all of the feedback and deeply considered the recommendations they were making before taking them back to the board. So we're just so thankful for the commitment of these three members, trustees on the redistricting committee. And so here's a slide you haven't seen yet. This is, we wanted just to show you all of the meetings and all of the things that took place over the last few months to get us to where we are today. So there were four special board meetings, three redistricting committee meetings, one public education forum, 10 community meetings, one public hearing, and a dedicated redistricting website, which many of the Lone Star staff diligently updated and organized. And all of that was to fully engage the trustees, all of you trustees, as well as the public. There was an opportunity for the public to submit proposed maps, to submit comments on the website. And what's not on this list is that we also had individual meetings with the trustees who wanted to have one-on-one meetings with us and ask specific questions about their single member districts. And we would check moving lines and check the, the populations and the C-VAP. And, and we tried to meet with every trustee at least once that, that wanted to. And that was an additional thing that was done in order to fully engage the trustees, to fully engage the, the community. And so here we are today with this map that we think very well is a, is a, is a wonderful representation of all the feedback we received of the, the trustees from the community. And we're confident that this map complies with the legal requirements, the practical requirements in the best way possible. So I'll turn it back over to Lisa to continue with the presentation.
So map 6A that we're presenting tonight, and as you will recall, that means we've been through maps one through six to get through to 6A, is an amalgamation of some legal requirements as well as trustee comments and public comments. And the number one legal requirement in redistricting is to rebalance. So we've got to get the difference between our most and least populous single member districts to be 10% or under. Over the last decade, you have grown in your single member districts. All of your single member districts have grown. They just have not grown at the same rate. And so the difference between your most and, and least populous single member district was about 38.2% at the top of the decade. And so we had to bring that down, and we wanted to be under 10%. So that was constraint number one. And then you had some additional constraints that got us to what we were looking at, at, at maps one through 6A. The first one that we've been talking about a lot, and I won't go into detail because we probably could all recite these constraints by now, is your 2013 consent decree that requires you to have single member districts and to also have certain single member districts that have certain demography. So you have to have two influence districts on the basis of combined citizen voting age population of African Americans and Latinos and one opportunity district where Latinos make more than 50% of the citizen voting age population. That's the definition of an opportunity district. So when rebalancing your single member districts as a result of the increases over the decade, we had to maintain those particular demographics in three of your single member districts. And we've actually done it in four of your single, four of your single member districts. So we've done a little bit more than what your consent decree would require, but we were able to do it based on the great diversity that you have in your system. And then the other constraints were the map drawing principles or the redistricting criteria adopted by this board. There are nine of them. Most of them restate requirements of state law, including our 10% rule, including complying with the Voting Rights Act, which in your case is even more specific. It's complying with that consent decree. And then something that has preoccupied us over the last month, how we got from map six to map 6A is minimizing the number of precinct splits between single member districts. So map six had some, was, was the best accumulation of following all of your criteria short of looking at precinct splits as well as trustee comments and public comments. And then getting from six to 6A, we tried to do our best to minimize those precinct splits so that we don't have folks who are in one precinct straddling two different single member districts. That makes it difficult on election day and for purposes of polling places and, and getting a ballot where you are entitled to vote in all of the elections that you're eligible to vote in. So we worked hard, you worked hard on minimizing those, and that's how we got from map six to map 6A. And so let's talk a little bit about map 6A. We've looked at the map 6A extensively. The first map that we have here shows map 6A not in reference to your current map. That's the, the next slide that will show how it is different from your, your current map. But as you know, we have been in an effort to rebalance the population, moving population from your population centers in the north of the system to some of your single member districts in the southern end of your system that are still growing, but are not growing at as fast a rate as some of the single member districts at the north part of the system. And so that is what map 6A does. Map 6A includes your county boundaries. You've got three of them within your large system, San Jacinto County, Montgomery County, and Harris County. Map 6A, this next slide shows a comparison of 6A to your current map. And as we've been talking about all along on this more than a year journey, the way you read this map is wherever color bleeds over the blue line, the blue line are your current single member district boundaries, and the color is the proposed boundary under map 6A. That's where you have a change. And you can see that there are changes in a lot of your single member districts where a single member district is either losing population or gaining population. And we've indicated on this slide each trustee in their single member district. But of course, we've been looking at data all along. And so I told you at the top of the decade, the difference between your most and least populous single member district was about 38%. That triggered our duty to redistrict. Under map 6A, you're at 9.8%. And you can see that single member districts two, three, four, and six continue to be either opportunity districts or influence districts. Six is your, is your opportunity district on the basis of Hispanic citizen voting age population. And two, three, and four continue to be influence districts. Remember, your consent decree only required you to have two, but you actually have three influence districts. And really, because of the growth in single member district one, that is an additional influence district, just barely, but an additional influence district on the basis of African American, Hispanic, and Asian population. If you take all of those populations combined, your consent decree requires the consideration of African American and Latino. So a lot of diversity in your districts, in your system as a whole, that is reflected appropriately in your single member districts. We've also included at trustee request, a breakdown by single member district of the precincts. You've received a data sheet that also has that information, but it's also included in this slide. And we've got for all nine single member districts, now the yellow highlighted numbers that have asterisks by them indicate where their splits. It may look like a lot of numbers because the same district is represented in more than one single member district, but you really only have about 43 splits. Map six had about 53, and we were able to eliminate roughly 10 to nine of those to get to map 6A. So you have your single member districts listed there, single member districts one through nine, all of their precincts, and indicating whether or not those precincts are in Harris County, San Jacinto County, or Montgomery County. And they are labeled accordingly and color coded accordingly. And then before I get to what I know are Rocky's favorite slides, I'm going to pause for a moment and see if there is anything that Rocky would like to add or anything that I have left out. And you're on mute, Rocky.
Yeah. Thank you, Lisa. No, you know, and I just wanted a couple of comments real quick. It's just been a pleasure to work with this board. I mean, I really appreciate everyone's patience. I know it wasn't Matthew and I kind of tag teamed on this, and Matthew was great. He turned stuff around pretty quick. He's really sharp, and I think working with you has really been good for him because he's been new, new to this, the system. But we had to, you know, we went from an average of 200,000 to, to, to over 240,000. So our, our task was fairly large, and I'm really just, the fact that we are, we are able to get to this and get to consensus fairly quick, you know, with six plans, I'm 6A even. I'm, I'm really pleased, and I think we've drawn some really good plans here. So I can, you know, we, we can walk through each one of these if you want to, just, just kind of take you down, you know, memory lane, if you will. You know, district one is one of our larger ones at 279,000. We needed to get quite a bit of population out of district one. You can see we finished right at our average. And those changes between six and 6A, you know, you can see there that we didn't necessarily clean up anything there in district one. It didn't change very much. But like Lisa said, you know, it, it did turn out to be, you know, an influenced district when, when we included the Asian population there. Next, district two. I'll, I'll just walk through these real, really quick. District two was pretty close, right? The onset, 253. We did, we did have to, keep in mind, we had to move population from north to south. So we really did create that, that domino effect, and I think we had some, some good successes there, making things even better than they were in some cases here. And three, three was 209. So three was one where we had to bring population into district three. So you can see where we added almost 50,000 persons in, into district three. Well, now, this was one of our more challenging ones because we still were, we're, we're trying to hold on to that, that district of influence. And we were successful there at the end. And again, it was with much cooperation between each of our trustees. District four, another district that, that was just 200,000, so another small district. We got it back up to 238,000. And, and again, district four, that was one where we were really trying to hold that Hispanic population above 50%. And we were successful, pretty tight. Again, good teamwork there. Five, 272,000 down to 255,000. We, we kept this district really pretty smooth as, as we moved through the whole process. District six, here's district six going from 231,000. Again, I'm just focused on 2020. We added about 10,000 persons there and, and held on to, most of our percentages stayed pretty similar to where, where they were when we started. District seven, 269,000. Again, we, we didn't take a lot out of district seven, so it, it did stay as one of our largest districts. No changes between six and 6A, but you can see there that, you know, in the end, we were able to hold on to many of our current percentages, which was, you know, one, one of our goals. And district eight, 273,000. So we did have to take quite a bit of population out of district eight. You know, almost 14,000, I think, we took out of district eight, keeping things though pretty level, 60 point, you know, with our percentages at, from the beginning to the end. And finally, district nine, 271,000, another district that gave up 10,000 persons working together. And again, we held our, our percentages very, very strong here in district nine. So again, it's just been a pleasure to work with everyone, and, you know, we're, we're really excited that we came to a pretty good plan here. I, I think it's a great plan.
And I'd just like to remind the public that one of the reasons that Rocky, Paige, and I are able to kind of sail through a presentation tonight that has such dense concepts and such very, very dense calculations and figures on the basis of multiple ethnic and demographic groups over several maps is because the board really has studied this information and has looked at this from a multitude of ways, from map one all the way to map 6A, constantly looking at the data, looking at the map drawing principles, looking at their constraints under federal and state law. So all of these concepts are very familiar to the board. They have studied. They have looked at what I call Rocky's favorite charts, these individual single member district charts with respect to the demographic data. And with each map, we add a new column so that there is a comparison to our work, and we can see our progression, and we can see how close we are getting to complying with our map drawing principles as well as trustee comments, public comments, and the constraints imposed by federal law. I echo Rocky's comments that it has been a pleasure to serve the board and work with the board. Not only have you been quick studies and asked wonderful questions and been wonderfully engaged, but you've been wonderfully welcoming, and you have supported a process that has been very inclusive of the public and all stakeholders. Chancellor Head, I just want to thank you for opening up your administration to us and making our job so easy from the general counsel's office to IT, to board services and chief of staff, to the police department. I've never felt so protected. I, I just want to thank, you know, everyone who has been involved in this process. It really has been a year-long process, coming in from the outside, making us feel welcome and to pull off these complicated presentations that are, that involve multiple people. And with that, And with that, I have one final thing I'd like to commend is to make a recommendation with respect to map six A. And it's recommending that this board adopt map six A as being the map that most captures your values as stated in your map drawing principles and the constraints that are imposed upon you by your 2013 consent decree, that you also approve the Order and Resolution Regarding Map Six A, which governs how that map will be phased in. That map will be phased in as the terms of your current trustees naturally expire. So that means in November of 2022, we're not having all of our trustees up for elections, but we're going to allow their terms to naturally expire and that map, this map will phase in along with those terms. That's an option under the education code that most entities, whether you are higher ed, K through 12, a county, a city, end up adopting for continuity of government. One of the reasons that it was so important as one of our map drawing principles that we didn't draw any of our current trustees out of, out of their residences was to be able to use that phase-in approach. So our recommendation is to adopt map six A as well as the Order and Resolution governing same, which I've explained to you in the public what's contained in that resolution. And then also importantly, because we have a duty, once you change your boundaries, to notify the counties that are impacted by that, particularly your election partners of those boundary changes, that you give the authorization to the administration to provide that formal notice.
Ask some questions before we go too far and she gets away from the podium?
Sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, excuse me.
No, no, please, sir.
No. You go first. I apologize.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Could we talk about District seven for just a moment?
Yes, sir.
This is for the public and as a reminder to our colleagues, District seven is currently vacant due to a resignation of a trustee earlier this year. And there was concern among some of my colleagues here at the board that District seven would not be represented, they would not have a voice. It would be, they would not be at the table, if you will. And we have made as a group, the, the group of nine here, if you will, eight minus the one, concerted effort to just really focus on data and to have every possible opportunity for community input with respect to all districts, but also District seven. And could you talk about the data? Talk about any potential pitfalls, anything we've missed as a board? I don't want to assume we got it all right, I think we did. But let's, let's spend a few minutes making sure that District seven will be represented properly and it'll be a fair election in November when that seat is open and candidates file.
Absolutely. So District seven is in the absolute northern end of your district. It had a population increase. It was one of your larger districts. And so as I indicated, it's one of the efforts that we had to do in order to balance your system was the cascade effect, move population from the northern end to the southern end of your district. It is not one of your influence or opportunity districts. So its demographic makeup at the beginning of the decade, at the beginning of last decade, as well as after the changes that we've made under the map, have not changed. So we don't expect electoral patterns in that particular single-member district to change as a result of, of the changes that we've made. But population-wise, it is now back in balance so that your entire system is in balance and within the requirements of state and federal law. Now, with respect to the fact that there is a vacancy in single-member District seven, trustee Sullivan, you're absolutely right, that was a concern of the board. And the redistricting committee really stood in the place of the representative of single-member District seven, making sure that single-member District seven had the same community meetings that every other single-member district had, that the format of those meetings were exactly the same in terms of the visual presentation and the in-person presentation and the information that was communicated. Every single-member district community education meeting was exactly the same and single-member District seven was treated no differently. At that, at, at that single-member district forum, representatives from the redistricting committee asked questions on behalf of both the public and on behalf of the absent representative for that single-member district. And that didn't happen just at community meetings, it happened during our redistricting committee meetings as well in terms of looking at different opportunities to rebalance things district-wide, but also making sure that the views of single-member District seven were upheld.
Good, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Trustee vote, yes.
The, the split districts, voting districts? Do we have the capability of putting those lines down, recorded property lines, so that households aren't split?
So Rocky, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that we, in terms of where we've split a precinct, have split it down a street or split it down a, like, you know, splitting a house or... But, but you, but you, you being the demographer can provide some more information on that as, as to where the split is. Yes, it's split between two single-member districts, but it's split in a, an illogical location.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, the split is a precinct split, not a parcel split. So it just means that the precinct itself, the boundary of that precinct is, is going down, down a road that actually splits, you know, that, that particular precinct between two single-member districts.
But trustee, it, it could split a neighborhood.
It could, yes.
It could.
And, and I understand, that's, okay. And then the other question was, is there anything to compel us? If there were a great shift in population and we drastically overstepped that 10% deviance between the population and from, from the largest to the smallest in population during that 10-year period between the two censuses, is there anything that would trigger?
No, because the, the data that we are required to use to make that assessment only comes out every 10 years. Yes, sir.
Okay. So we don't have to do this until then?
Until 2030, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good question. Thank you. So if my, if I may, colleagues, I am ready to entertain a motion on Ms. McBride's recommendation.
Thank you, Chair.
Trustee Sullivan, please.
Thank you, thank you for recognizing me. Is, I'd make a motion that I'd like to have a discussion afterwards, correct? Okay, make a motion that the board adopt redistricting map six and the resolution, and the order and resolution governing the same and authorize the administration to provide notice of the system's new single-member district boundaries to all impacted counties.
Is it six or six A?
Six A.
Six A, excuse me. If I said six, I apologize. The motion is for six A.
Stoma, second.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan. Can I have a second?
Stoma, second.
Trustee Stoma, perfect, thank you. So now we move to any discussions, colleagues. Do we have any additional discussions?
Got some comments. I don't want to dominate the conversation, though, I apologize.
Please, trustee Sullivan.
Thank you. Really just wanted to take a moment to, to thank you, Chair, for creating the redistricting committee and appointing myself and trustee Mario and trustee Pierce, who's joining us virtually. I, I think we've approached this in a business-like way. It's not been political at all. We've had some disagreements and we've worked through them, and that's constructive and it's very positive. I think it makes us a stronger board. And the, where there have been differences in boundaries and populations and precincts and all the other terminology, trustees have worked one-on-one and, and together to work those out, and that's the way it should be. So this has been a very collaborative effort, it's been very fair. I think it's been very open, it's been very honest, it's been very transparent, not to use buzzwords, but that it's really true. And I think that this entire board can be proud of where, where, from where we started to where we ended up. We've had outstanding support from the administration, support from our outside legal counsel, support from the board secretary, as you mentioned, IT, the police department, the website, the OTS guys. It goes on and on. And the public has had numerous opportunities for input in person as well as all of us being available here, trustees, our constituents, and then also the, the vibrant website that the district has taking public comment. And when those public comments were made, they were paid attention to. So I just want to thank everyone for, for their hard work.
Madam Chair. Thank you, trustee Sullivan, trustee Mario, oh, trustee Kane.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the, the redistricting committee, the trustees that served on the redistricting committee, as well as Ms. Martin, Ms. McBride, Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Cluck for a very fine job. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kane. Do we have anyone else? If we don't, before we make a, before we make a vote, I do want to say a couple of words. So I want to thank Ms. McBride, Ms. Martin. Thank you so much for the great work that you did in the presentations. I just want to echo what trustee Sullivan had mentioned. Thank you for guiding us and for educating us in this process. Rocky, thank you so much for virtually being with us and helping us, you know, just redistrict and kind of move those maps around. So thank you so much. And I don't think that Matthew is here, but if he's hearing us somewhere, we just wanted, Matthew, wherever you are, thank you so much. And then I also want to thank a couple of employees that have attended and assisted with the redistricting meetings. I think it's important that we mention them by name. And I apologize if I might not say some of the names correctly, but I just want to thank you very, very much for all that you do. And so for our community forums, we have Braxton, Nathaniel, Adam, Pablo, Butch, and Tila. Thank you so much for participating in those meetings, thank you. And then for the campus community forums and OTS, we have Kyle, Christopher, Russell, Brian, Greg, Jeff, and Thomas. Thank you very, very much. And the regular community meetings, the community forums, we have Janet, Charmisa, Maria, Jennifer, Karen, John, Florence, Bill, and all the marketing and web services team. Thank you very, very much. We would not be here without you, so you made all the effort completely easy for us. So thank you very, very much. And then lastly, I just want to commend our, our redistricting committee members. Trustee Mario, thank you very much for your service. Trustee Pierce, thank you so much for your service in the committee. And then Chairman Sullivan, thank you so much for your service. We, I appreciate you, what you've done in this committee, and I appreciate your work and your dedication. And Paige, thank you so much as well for, for helping us. Thank you very much. So having said this, I will do a roll call. I think it's very important that I do a roll call to make sure that we are all in page and we approve this new map six A. So let us start with trustee Mario.
Aye, aye.
Aye, perfect. Trustee Kane.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Proudly vote yes.
Trustee Pierce.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Stoma.
Yes.
Trustee vote.
Aye.
Perfect, trustee Wilson.
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much, colleagues. Map six A has passed, the item has passed. Thank you very much. I think we should applaud this. Now we move to suggested future agenda items. Do we have any future agenda items? We do not. And it is 5:49 PM, and so the chair adjourns this meeting. Thank you.